Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to call the January 21st, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Mr. King, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Chairman Olmeyer called in absent with notice. Vice Chairman Olmerton.
Oh, present.
Commissioner Leaverton.
Here.
Commissioner Van Arsdale.
Eric.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Sure.
So, please stand for the flag sleeve and remain standing for the application. Right to the meeting.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Lord, for bringing us together so that we can serve this community and make things better. Thank you for the blessings that we have in our lives, be it small, be it big. We are appreciative of everything that we get, in Jesus' name, amen.
Agenda item number two is the approval of the minutes for January 7th. Any commissioners have any changes, corrections, or additions for the minutes of January 7th?
I'd like to move approval of the minutes.
Seven.
January 7th.
So, on this one, we have a motion for approval. Continues, is that on item number three?
We got public comment.
A public comment, okay. Oh, yeah. So, let's, um... Okay, so we have a public comment. We have Maria. Yeah, I'm not gonna... Just, I'm not gonna...
She's Friday.
Oh, she's Friday. Okay, I did. Oh, Friday. Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, we have any public comment? Okay, not seen any. We will move on to item number three. Or item four, excuse me. This is site development review for... I asked the... To ask the... Sorry, which...
No, I'll take that.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Sorry. HP, thank you, HP.
No problem. This is site development review in 19-008 Harvard Plaza. This item was before you, and it was continued to today from prior meeting date specific, but we haven't received a proper noticing from the applicant yet, so we're asking to be continued off calendar. And once we receive the proper noticing requirements, then we will renotice on the paper as well as mailouts.
So, I'll move that the public, that we continue to off calendar.
Second.
Okay. Item number five, conditional use permit, 19-012. All right, Solad.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting conditional use permit 19-012. The property owner is Just For Fun Raed Qassam. The applicant is present, Maria Aga, and the location is 1111 South Sanderson. The request is to upgrade from an existing Type 20 general ABC license, which is for beer and wine, and to upgrade to a Type 21, which is for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits at Just For Fun, which is a Unical gas station with convenience store and a drive-through car wash. Page Plaza is based on Hemet Municipal Code C2, general commercial, and Hemet Municipal Code Section 9090 gives, requires that an ABC license require approval of a conditional use permit, and Hemet Municipal Code Section 9090(c1) requires that a change in an existing ABC license go through a CUP approval process. And Hemet Municipal Code 90-42.4 gives the Planning Commission authority to approve, deny, or modify the project. Here we can see the general plan land use is community commercial. The zoning, it's actually in a specific plan. It's Page Plaza's specific plan, but it is designated C2. Here's an aerial view of the Unical gas station. This is the canopy with the gas pumps, and this is the convenience store. Here's a floor plan or a site plan of the project. This is Sanderson. You enter this way, the gas pumps are here, convenience store is here. The car wash tunnel goes around back here and out this way. Here's an enlargement of the floor plan. This is the entrance. Here's the counter, and the proposed location of the distilled spirits is in this area right here, behind the cashier. Right now, in the city of Hemet, there are 14 gas stations with convenience stores, and there are four that are in the surrounding county near the Hemet boundaries, and all of the convenience stores with gas stations have a Type 20, which is the beer and wine. And we did receive these numbers from the police department, and they were calls that came in from January 1st, 2018, to October 9, 2019, and there were a total of, let's see, we have 103 calls for Walgreens, which is right on the corner of Sanderson and Stetson. They have a Type 20. 299 calls to Unical, which has a Type 20, and 1,178 calls to Walmart that they're at Page Plaza, and they have a Type 21. Further down on Sanderson near Florida, there was 151 calls to the 99 cent store, and they have a Type 20, and 985 calls to Target, and they have a Type 21. In order for a decision to be made on the conditional use permit, findings have to be made. I'm going to go through the findings and then give if we were able to make that finding or not. The first finding is that the proposed location of the conditional use permit is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purpose of the zoning which it is located. So, there is an existing Type 20 license there at the Just For Fun, and it is allowable with a conditional use permit. And additionally, the Type 21 represents an increase in intensity, which may require demand in essential public services and may be detrimental to public health and safety and welfare due to the increase in crime and demand for additional police services based on those calls that we saw that were made to those locations. Finding number two is that the proposed location of the conditional use permit and the conditions under which it will be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. Staff cannot make the findings again because of the number of calls, and this is just repeating that information of the total calls that were made to Page Plaza during that period of time. These are the additional calls that were made, but these were to Target and to 99 cent store, and this is just for comparison. Looking at the gas stations that are in the city of Hemet that have the Type 20, there were 14 of them, and the Just For Fun ranked ninth in highest with the number of calls. Staff is concerned that the upgrade of the Type ABC license could have, may have the potential to further increase nuisance and criminal behavior, including alcohol-related crime and more serious criminal offenses. Finding number three is that the use and operation is consistent with the general plan, elements, goals, and policies. Staff could not make that finding because there is a goal in Healthy Communities, Goal Number 15.5, which says that we, that there is a need to create, update, and enforce regulations and laws pertaining to the location, retailing, and use of unhealthy substances such as tobacco, marijuana, and drugs and alcohol. Required finding number four is that the type sensitivity and operating characteristics of the proposed to use and the manner in which they will be located on the site are compatible with existing land uses, the character of established neighborhoods, or planned development in this vicinity. Staff could not make the finding with Walgreens on the corner of Stetson and Sanderson with a Type 20, Walmart in the same center with a Type 21. It does not require, it would not be a need or a necessity to have an upgrade, and neither would this further the general plan. In Section 9090 of the code, there are additional findings that need to be made when an upgrade is requested, and one of those is that the proposed location is at least 600 feet from a public park or a place of worship or a school, and it does meet that distance requirement, that it's located at least 100 feet from residential uses, and it is, and it is at least 1,000 feet from an existing parolee, probationary, probationer, homes, emergency shelter, or supportive housing or transitional housing, and there are no known uses of that sort within 1,000 feet. And it is fully visible from the public street, and there are no obstructions, or there are no views that are obstructed from the public, the public street. The additional finding number three, which cannot be made, it says that the proposed use will not be detrimental to surrounding properties and neighborhoods, including contributing to loitering, public drunkenness, noise, obstructing pedestrian and vehicular traffic, parking, crime, interference with pedestrian corridors seized by children, defacement, and damage of structures. Staff cannot make that finding just based on the number of calls that have been made to that location, and those are repeated here again. There is concern that an upgrade in the license could have a potential to increase nuisance and criminal behavior, including alcohol-related crimes and more serious crime offenses such as loitering, and the list goes on. Additionally, there are 18 gas stations in Hemet and the surrounding areas, and they all have a Type 20. If this one was upgraded to a Type 21, it could set unwanted precedent for this use. The notice of this hearing was provided to property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius, and that was done on November 21st, 2019. They were given a 10-day notice, and it was also in the paper. On November 10, November 25th, we did hear from the applicant who requested that the hearing be continued to another date, which is January, which is today's date, January 21st, 2020. And at the time of report preparation, the Planning Commission has not received any letters or comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition to this project. Regarding CEQA, this project does not, CEQA does not apply to this project if the project is not approved. Staff is recommending that Resolution Bill Number 19-029 be denying conditional use That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, and if you have any questions with me or the applicant.
Thank you, Solad. Any other commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do. One is on the ABC licensing, but the track, census track, 435.04. It says, so ABC authorizes seven on sale and four off sale, but currently we have a total of nine off sale. So, we're already over-concentrated in that census tract as of right now per ABC?
That was the initial information that we received. However, when we were reviewing the data from ABC, we discovered that there's some, the way they've correlated the data doesn't reflect the current situation, so we didn't recommend anything regarding the individual census tract, whether we looked at over-concentration in the city as a whole. The ABC licensing information has combined information into census tracts that's not actually representational. But they're using a 2000 census map for their, right, for collecting their data, and those census tracts have actually been split into different census tracts. So, we didn't include further information or finding about the individual census tract.
So, using the data as they have it, it's, we're over-concentrated, but using the data citywide, we're still over-concentrated.
Well, according to the information, in one part of their, the ABC reports, they're showing that over-concentration, but actually, that census tract where they're recording is now been split into two census tracts, and they're not, they're not showing that representation. So, we didn't include any additional information about that. We mentioned that in our previous report, but we did not include it in this report. Because we discovered that the information was essentially on a, based on a map that was out of date.
One year's old. So, this was turned down before in 2014?
That's correct.
What has changed?
There is a letter from the applicant.
I saw that.
That's the last exhibit. We asked the applicant that exact question, and the letter that you find at the end of your staff report is their response to that question.
So, as far as the city's concerned, nothing has really changed as far as our policies, our procedures, everything else. It's what the applicant said in the letter.
Correct.
No, I don't think I saw it in the staff report, but do we have an overall percentage of what the city as a whole is over-concentrated?
Yes, it is in the staff report. Um... That's on page five of the staff report. The allowable, the second, the paragraph at the top, it says undue concentration in the city.
Yep.
If you look at the population numbers that ABC uses for calculating it, in the city of Hemet, there would be 66 licenses allowed, and there are currently 74 active licenses.
Is there a difference in how they look at an off-sale license between Class 21 and 20 relative to concentration?
I believe it's the same, right?
Well, what we provided here is the, just the off-sale.
Oh, that's, I see.
We did not include data regarding on-sale.
Between 20 and 21?
Yeah, between beer, wine, and hard.
No, there's, there's no difference in the data for those two. But, right. I should say there's no difference. There's, they're reported in the same category. So, there's 74 off-sale permits. That includes both 20 and 21, which are the beer and wine and the beer and wine plus liquor. So, those are consolidated in that number, and ABC doesn't identify them separately. You have to go through individually and look at them.
Any more questions for staff?
I'm not sure if this will come up in public comment, but reading the letter from Sergeant Michael Moll, sorry. I didn't see a specific recommendation, and there's a lot of good information there, but I'm assuming that, based on presence and also based on the stats that were provided, that the recommendation of our police department is to deny the CUP.
Well, essentially, the police department is in the role of providing information, and then in the planning department, we consolidate the information from all the reports and develop a recommendation based upon our discussions with those departments. So, this, the recommendation of the report is based on the consolidated information from all the departments.
Okay. Thank you, Solad. All right, so this is a public hearing. So, I will open the public hearing. It's fine. And we will take comments from the applicant. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name is Maria Aga, and my address is 530 East Florida Avenue here in Hemet. Good? Okay. So, I am the agent for Just For Fun LLC tonight, and as we are very well aware of, I'm representing a gas station on the corner of Sanderson, Sanderson and Stetson. This gas station is approximately, I'll say, less than 4,000 square feet. It is open 24 hours a day. It employs approximately 14 employees. We do have four employees per shift with management at all times. One of the comments from the commissioners was if we were presenting anything different this time, and I certainly want to say yes. This time, we want to give the city an opportunity to let us have an upgraded 21 liquor license where it's regulated. This time, we are proposing only a 54-square-foot area behind the cash register where we can sell distilled spirits. It's not going to be anything below half a pint. And we were also proposing that this area can be enclosed, okay? I understand that one of the concerns listed on the staff report would be to set a precedence for other gas stations, one in liquor. And what I can say to that is why be afraid? We have other neighboring cities who have taken and allowed that opportunity to their business owners. And if you regulate it accordingly, I don't see why that will be a problem. Not only are we offering to encase the distilled spirits, but we are also saying, hey, we can have a security guard there on-site at all times until 2:00 in the morning when the cells are liquor, the cells of liquor are stocked. I think that can definitely mitigate many of the concerns that the city has in regards to crime, in regards to panhandling, or any nuisance that you may be concerned about. Now, one of, one of the other concerns that the city has was a report that was submitted by this police department. However, I, it is my opinion that there is no direct correlation between the Type 21 license and the Type 20 license and these statistics. We don't know that. We just know that these are the facts. Yes, these calls were made to the police department, but what correlation is there between the Type 21 and the Type 20? We don't know. Here it says that we, the Hemet 76 station called in the last 20 months 299 times, and that we are ninth out of the 14 gas stations. It is because we are very proactive. Unfortunately, here in the city of Hemet, there are many, many homeless people that do hang out, you know, in businesses, and we chase them out right away. We're very, very, very proactive. So, again, you cannot say that it's directly correlated to Type 20 or Type 21. Additionally, you can see that the Walmart, the Target have bigger, bigger numbers and calls to the police department, and it's because they're a bigger store. They have more businesses. They're almost 10 times as big as the gas station. So, I don't think that is a good comparison, okay? So, most of the, most of the concerns here is because there are concerns, again, because of the calls, because potential increase in crime, a potential increase in panhandling and nuisance, and I think that with the proposal that we have made, that can be mitigated. I mean, we're talking about 54 square feet behind the cash register, locked in the cabinet, and we can certainly have that security guard up to 2:00 in the morning. I think that that statement can pretty much cover most of the concerns that you have. Again, let's see. Yes, this is most of the concerns that you have. I don't agree that it will provide an unhealthy development pattern, again, because we're trying to mitigate those concerns upfront. The only thing that I do agree with here, and I want to make this short, is that the city does have to approve this, and we are here as business owners, trying to work with the city, trying to maybe come to a medium where the city regulates and they oversee this kind of activity, and if it doesn't work, then maybe we can pull that license in the future. I don't see why, why we can't go that route. So, with that said, so we're, once again, we're only asking for 54 square feet behind the register, in a little corner, in a locked cabinet, okay? There will be no liquor on the floor, and we only want to sell a half a pint or more. We're not trying to sell those little, those little bottles. We will have patrol security from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. The shopping center provides that for all of their business owners, but as an individual owner, we will provide security from 10 a.m., 10 p.m. to 2 a.m. And again, we're willing to enclose the liquor to mitigate any concerns that the city may have. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Just to be clear, the difference in your application today compared to your difference in your application in 2014 is... I'll let you tell me.
Yes, ma'am. Our previous application did not state that we will confine the liquor behind the counter. We did consider liquor on the floor. We were not considering enclosing the liquor, which we are now, and we will also provide our own paid security from 10 p.m. to 2 a.m. That's the difference. We wanted it on the floor before. We're not asking for that now. And also, we're selling half a pint or more.
And before, you were able to sell the small bottles, et cetera.
Well, typically, if you're asking for a liquor license, you should be able to, but that's not what we want to do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions? I'm sure Ward is sneaking over there.
Hi, I, no, I'm, you made a comment that see if it works, and if it doesn't work, revoke the license or something along those lines.
If it's a possibility, it's just an idea.
What would, what would the, what in your mind would the criteria be that would say that it didn't work?
I would say if you have maybe an up... I would say if you have maybe an upgrade in criminal activity that is serious, that is very much different than the one that's happening now. So right now, we're having, we have 299 calls in the last 20 months, right? And most of those calls were not serious. I believe he, they said it was panhandling, it was some beer runs, but of course, if the liquor is enclosed, they are not going to be able to run away with that one. So I'm saying very serious crimes, different to what we have now.
I keep it honest here. Now, the city has no enforcement. This is all handled by ABC, correct? Once the license is issued, what recourse does the city have in terms of...
Under consideration is a conditional use permit?
No, after it's issued.
But, but, once it's issued, then the conditions under that conditional use permit would apply if they were to approve that. If they were in violation of those conditions, then the city has the authority to revoke that conditional use permit, which we would then convey to ABC, and they would revoke the license.
I do want to add one more thing, I'm sorry. ABC has already approved us, and I believe I submitted a letter not too long ago. It's an idea. We're trying to work with you and to mitigate all your concerns. We will do what it takes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question of our police department.
Sergeant Moll.
And I know you're here to provide us with information, and just one of the things that was kind of glaring when they gave us the numbers was the number of violations, or, I'm sorry, of calls for service to the Walmart, right there in the same center. Is that, were they theft, were they related to the alcohol that they sell? Do you know, have any...
I don't have the stats for me, Sullivan. If you bring the paper, I'd email it by any chance. I don't have the hard numbers in front of me.
And I know this is just kind of asking opinion. There are no other gas stations with convenience stores in town that are licensed for hard liquor?
No. There are no other gas stations in town that currently have a type 21 license.
Or the sphere of influence either, correct?
Four that are in the sphere of influence?
There should be more than four.
I believe Sullivan looked up those stats. I didn't look outside the city. I'm sorry, man. So what was the question, Walmart, what kind of calls in general?
Are they, how are they related to the amount of, the fact that Walmart is selling the type 21 alcohol?
Well, just bear in mind, the police department, we're just here to provide statistical information and the facts, so we don't put our personal opinion out there. That's, those decisions are made elsewhere. But for staff-wise, for Sanderson or for the Walmart on Sanderson, there are several call types, almost, I'd say, between 30 different call types. So if you're looking at just everything from stolen vehicles, to traffic accidents, to assaults, they didn't have any robberies. They had one domestic, they had, you know, everything from any kind of assault where there's domestic violence, verbal disturbances, weapons brandishing, vehicle burglaries, shoplifting, the list goes quite on. And these calls also include medical aids, officer-initiated calls, as well as calls generated by the store themselves.
So that it's all of them?
It's all encompassing of all, any kind of public safety response.
Okay. And then, at the stores in town, we have type 21 licenses, and that might not be a question for you, but the type 21s where there's hard liquor sold in the centers that they are, do you notice an uptick in issues and criminal activity, or issues of underage, you know, underage children trying to buy?
Well, it's hard to narrow it down to, like she said earlier, to distinguish between which crime is being generated by necessarily the type of license that store has. Just statistically, if you, there are certain areas that have more crime than others, whether there's a gas station there or a liquor store there. Now, certain areas in town, liquor stores could be more prone to vagrancy issues, homeless congregating there, peeing their alcohol there and just hanging out. But again, that depends on, there are so many dynamics, it'd be hard to narrow that down just because of the type of license, or maybe just the neighborhood itself. It could be how involved the property owners are in dealing with them, or if they are enabling them by allowing them to be there. It's too broad of a brush.
And then, final question, we have a high school right down the street, not far. The students, I'm sure, go through that shopping center. I know when we first put that shopping center in, there was a lot of issues that got brought up because of students' activities in them. Do you see any issues regarding that when it comes to students coming in?
Just statistically-wise, they were one of the larger stores that had the beer runs by juveniles. There were...
I'm trying to look at that.
Oh, my stats on the...
On the one, do you recall?
Yeah.
I don't know if they're large.
No, the, just the one for 66. 66. Now, was that the beer runs total or beer runs by juveniles?
The majority.
Yeah. So they do have some beer runs, and then obviously, you can try to mitigate that by locking it up, but then that just, again, there's so many dynamics, I couldn't be able to answer the question. I don't want to give an opinion as far as hypotheticals.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions for staff? Good. Okay, so this is a public hearing, and we currently now have a public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Okay. So the commission have any additional questions for the applicant speaker here?
I just, I'm kind of torn a little bit, you know? It's like, my first commission meeting that I attended...
You should close the public hearing if you're going to discussion.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and now we can bring it back to the commission for discussion, so.
My first commission meeting that I attended was, there was a similar type of a store that was being proposed across the street, and this room was filled with people that were concerned about, you know, the impacts of what that store with the class 20 license would have. But then you go to any store now in town, Stater Brothers, Walmart, and all the liquor is locked up in a cabinet. I think that just seems to be kind of, I mean, along with like shaving cream and stuff like that, which is...
A formula.
So, there's a, there's a problem that is, it's hard to say, yeah, it's because of the 20, the class 21. It's hard for me to understand how that, I mean, I see that, I can see that it's more in the number four, I think it was, or the supplemental as a result of rocks is the, you know, the, I forgot, let me pull that up. I understand that part of it. I just, I think that, I think that if it doesn't, if it doesn't increase concentration for ABC, if it doesn't, you know, and the applicant is willing to do whatever the city is wanting them to do in terms of regulating it, and there's some sort of a, of a way to monitor and say, does that work? What's the difference between distilled spirits at a gas station versus at a liquor store? I don't know what that difference is. Is it because you drive and you're getting gas and you're going to be driving? What is the, what's the difference? I'm, I'm not, I'm, that's a genuine question. Why is it, why are we concerned as a city, and to staff, why are we concerned that it opens up a precedent for gas stations having a type 21 license?
If the chair would like me to address that?
Just please.
The concern is, is that with a gas station, because of the gas, you have a lot more customers coming to that store than you would for a convenience store, you know, that doesn't have gasoline. So just the sheer volume of people coming to the store creates additional opportunities for issues to arise, for security problems, for theft of anything. Again, as the applicant indicated, you know, there's some speculation in that. It's difficult to, as the sergeant indicated, it's difficult to isolate the statistics specifically, because at this point in time, we haven't allowed any other gas stations to have liquor sales. So can we point specifically and say, well, this station has liquor, and therefore they have twice as many calls as a station that doesn't? No, we don't have those kinds of statistics because we haven't otherwise allowed gas stations to have liquor sales. It does appear that stations that have, or stores that have gas stations have a lot more calls. Are those going to be more severe with liquor? That's a concern that we have. As the applicant indicated, you know, Walmart is about 25 times the size of their store. They have about four times the number of calls. So you could look at that and say, well, maybe, you know, we're having a lot more problems at that store relative to the size of the Walmart. On the other hand, as the applicant indicated, it may be because they're proactive about calling the police about problems. We definitely see that. Some stores are much more proactive than others in calling the police whenever there's a problem. That's one of the reasons why, as you've seen with several other applications for liquor, or even beer and wine, in some cases, we've asked the, not at gas stations, but other types of liquor sales, we've asked the owner或operator to provide private security. At this point in time, the applicant has indicated they're willing to do that. So yes, you can make some correlations with the statistics and say, it does appear that when you have sale of liquor, there's more calls for service than if you don't have sales of liquor. Can we definitively demonstrate that? No, but that seems to be the case. Again, you know, they have suggested that some differences from their previous application. The question for the commission is, is do you feel that that's sufficient to warrant approval of this? Or do you feel that there are still concerns that this is going to lead to additional concerns? I think, you know, it is, we don't have definitive evidence that we've presented to you tonight. I don't know if we could generate that. It would be a substantial effort. But subjectively, it does appear that there are more calls for service when liquor is involved as opposed to only beer and wine. And, you know, just logically, you can think about that. It's much easier to get drunk and have problems when you're dealing with liquor versus beer and wine.
The other thing is, is that, and it doesn't say that somebody's going to jump in their car and whip open a bottle that they just bought, because they can't do that with beer either, but...
You know that that's a problem.
Well, they do. But that is a problem.
We have a large number of drunk driving arrests.
And that's, you know, that combination is just not something that I, I think is a good combination, but, and I think, I think it is true that if you set a precedent, then how many others are going to come in and say they want to do it too? And I think there's a reason that our police department has, is here and has some concern.
Undeniably, the reason for this is because it, you know, the applicant believes that they will make substantially additional sales and therefore more profits because they're able to sell liquor. We've heard that from, in other situations where we have bars that want to, you know, or restaurants that have beer and wine, and they want to add liquor. The general feeling is, and obviously, it's borne out because many applicants pursue that, that liquor will result in greater sales. Does that also result in greater problems? We're concerned that there is a correlation between those two. And undeniably, if you set this, you know, if you approve this, then I would expect that there will be other stations in town that would like to have the same opportunity. That's, you know, a question that the commission has to consider, whether that's something you want to do.
Yeah, I've got, I have experience in this as a constituent. Several years ago, I was involved with a, there's a type 21 that was proposed on Cornell in Florida, and the ABC approved it. However, they, the ABC, my experience with the ABC, they will prove anything, they have a stamp. They don't even look at their own data. I mean, it could be 500 times over-concentrated, they'll still prove it. So it really boils down to here, local control, to where we define what's going to, the future is, these types of things. The city is over-concentrated.
No, I...
And it has too many liquor licenses, especially off-sale. You know, on-sale, those restaurants and bars and that kind of stuff, those are different. So really, I mean, it's going to, because ABC does not, I'll say this in my own humble opinion and experience, they do not care about the communities. They, they, so it really boils down to us and the planning commission for the decision on this, so.
So, just for my flow, because I want to make sure that I have it right, if we vote, you know, we vote yes to deny it, from here, it'll still go to the city council, correct?
As it's appealed, only if it's appealed.
If it's appealed, so if it's appealed, it goes to the city council, they, however, if they deny it, the applicant can take legal action from there, correct? What my concern is, is doing what's best for our community, so that's my main concern. If I have something in front of me that says this is, this is, we have proof that we should deny it, that we should not do it, then that's, you know, then that's what the city's come up with. They've said, this is what, how we feel, but we have legs to stand on. Is, I mean, is there legs to stand on should we go to court, should they take us to court?
I feel that the crime statistics are substantial evidence. What I want to point out, substantial evidence is the standard that the courts use in this kind of context. That's not to say that there is a right or a wrong. There could be substantial evidence to support either position. What really matters is that you, whatever position you end up choosing is supported by that evidence. So there's many cases, I'd say, you know, probably most cases, where there could be substantial evidence to support either route. It's just a matter of making sure that you have that evidence in your record. I feel that with crime stats, that's typically what is used to look at, alcohol licensing issues, but, you know, it's not a exact science.
Oh, and would the, if something like that happened, would the ABC concentration, the existing permits that are in place, would that be able to be used in support or in, you know, supplementary to the decision to deny it?
I'm not sure I'm quite understanding your exact question. What we would look at, what the court would look at, would be all of the information that's in the record. And if there is sufficient evidence in the record to support the decision that is made, the court will uphold it. If there is substantial evidence in the, also in the record to support an alternative decision, that does not mean the court will overrule the city's action. All that matters is, is the city's action supported by evidence, and it, doesn't matter whether there's evidence to support a different course of action. Does that make sense? Yes.
So I was, I was here also when they had the meeting on the 7-Eleven across the street, and it seemed like there was a lot of talk about, concern about more liquors, not good, and concentrated in this area, including, I thought, and I might be wrong, that kind of thought from the applicant that's here tonight. So, so again, I, I, well, let me say this. I think that setting a precedent, and not just using you as an example, as the applicant as an example, but setting a precedent, there's a reason why down through the many years that I was on council and others were too, that we did not allow hard liquor being sold at gas stations. And there, and I just... And there, and I just believe that we should, in fact, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution bill number nineteen dash oh-two-nine, deny CUP number nineteen dash oh-twelve based on the information and findings contained in resolution bill number nineteen oh-twenty-nine.
I, I want to follow up a little bit before, before we do, do that with Tiffany's last line of questioning and making, making sure that, like, I, from, from the supplemental requirements out of the Hemet Rocks, I, I agree with the intent of why we're not wanting to set that precedent. But, what I'm kind of concerned about, I think in the same line as what you're saying, is there's, they're, they're doing what they would, what you would expect a business owner to do to meet the requirements. Are we, are we confident enough in saying, in denying this, this CUP? Um, and, and, obviously, it was denied before, but the differences now are there, so they're addressing some of those concerns. Is that enough? Do, are we still comfortable with, in consideration of what they're saying that they're going to do? Locking it up, the, the guard, um, the, the things that would make it less likely, I mean?
Make it less likely, but what about the next gas station?
Sure.
And the next gas station, and the next gas station?
And I think, I think Nelson's, your, your, your comment about that really just, it's a matter of traffic flow and opportunity. And so, you get a lot more people in that business, and that, and that you can tie that with the statistics to say that, yeah, there's, you're going to have a more, more opportunity for, for problems. Just because you're going to have a lot more people going through there that weren't going there specifically to buy alcohol. And then, they don't, they're like, oh, you know what, that's a good idea, I was having a bad day, or whatever, but, um, I just, I, I want you to feel comfortable that, and it sounds like you are, that, that, that we're, we're doing what, by, by recommending denial of this cup that we are, um, in, in proper standing to, to, just to support ourselves based on the staff report here.
I can never guarantee anything like that. I just want to make that clear. I mean, there's so many variables, including just the whims of a judge, that I can't guarantee. However, I think staff has done an excellent job at gathering evidence. And if this is appealed to city council, which would be a required step before, um, filing any litigation, we would certainly make sure that we really have absolutely all of the correct data. And if we can't go back and maybe try to mire out some of the, the issues with the ABC data that, that Nelson mentioned, and provide even more evidence in the record, that would be part of what a judge looks at. We, we certainly would do that.
Mr. Chair, I'd point out there's a motion on the floor. You should either have a second or, I second the motion for discussion.
All right. We have a second?
He's second.
We'll call boot.
So, we have to vote, or can we keep talking, discuss? We haven't had a vote.
Open for discussion, but, I mean, you know, you just, you had a motion on the floor, so you should address that. But, there's certainly opportunity for additional discussion.
So, I, you know, my whole thing is I'm always pro-business. If a business thinks, you know, ninety-nine cent store thinks that they're going to do good business at a certain location, where we say, we can't have a hundred of them in our community. You know, that if they've put in the time, the effort, the car wash, you know, obviously, that, this was back to, you know, what it was. It was going to be a car wash in a, in a convenience store across the street. I'm really surprised there's not more community here this evening. It just kind of states that, you know, unfortunately, sometimes people don't care until something happens. You know, people, someone buys a bottle of liquor there, gets drunk, crashes a car, kills a kid. Then, then it circles back around to, okay, you know, that, then, then that's when people unfortunately sometimes show up. I'm definitely pro-business. I think if someone thinks something's going to be better for their business and expand their business, and obviously, it would bring in more tax revenue for the city, so there is a positive to that side of it, then there's always that variable. On the flip side of it, if our city might, I am a representative of the city, and if they, if there's enough that they say that this is not what should be, um, allowed, then that's, you know, I kind of have to go off of, it's not just my opinion. So, it's, you know, it's what's been presented, what we've seen and gone through, so.
Well said, and I agree.
Okay. So, do we?
Call for the question?
Any, any further questions? Comments? Okay. All right. So, we, we're not voting, are we?
Um, so, let's.
Was a motion, and John's second? Yeah. So, all right. We'll call boot. There we go. All right.
So, just for the record, the action of the commission was to deny the request. The planning commission's action is final and best appealed to the city council within ten days.
Thank you, Nelson. Okay. All right. Onto item number six, city attorney reports.
I don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay. Onto community development reports.
I don't have anything to report.
Just, okay. All right. Number eight. So, planning commission reports.
Dear person over Myers' absent, Vice Chair Kristen Olerton?
I have nothing to report.
Ms. Lee Burton?
I have nothing to report, but is there a possibility, we've talked about it, I can think now at a couple of different meetings, about discussing or bringing forth, and I don't even know that it would be in the planning commission's scope or realm, but in regards to the county, annexation of county area? Has there been work studies? Has there been, I know it's a huge, huge thing, but we're about to have a, um, census this year, right? And the census isn't going to include me. It's not going to include John. You know, it's not going to include some really, you know, amazing parts of our community that unfortunately aren't counted.
Certainly, the city has a sphere of influence that's been identified. Recent, well, no longer recent, but changes in law several years ago required the local agency formation commission to periodically review the spheres of influence of cities to determine, uh, whether or not there were actions being done to annex those cities to the, to annex those areas to the city. I'm not aware, I don't know if, if Mr. Kang is aware of the last LAFCO review of the city's sphere. There is, you know, certainly, the city can initiate an annexation request. Typically, like many other situations, that triggers a potential vote of the people affected. Generally, where there are residential areas that are occupied, people in those areas frequently prefer to stay under county regulation because those regulations, particularly in the realm of planning, are often less than they are in cities. So, usually, what you see with annexations is that they are the result of major property owners coming forward requesting annexation to the city. And they basically control the votes of that area. And so, an election, you know, it is fairly straightforward. Certainly, it's, it's within the realm of the planning commission to discuss that. I mean, the annexations are, are part of the purview of the planning commission. It does require initiation by the city and an application to the local agency formation commission, who must approve the annexation. And part of that is a plan of services that identifies how the city would provide community services to those areas. So, that, it's a complex procedure. We can discuss it, but I think the, the critical question is, what is the attitude of the property owners? And again, the property owners are the key. What is the attitude of the property areas, owners in the areas that might be annexed to the city?